We're going to go ahead and reconvene the meeting and pick up where we left off. And I think that we had pretty much ended your presentation and we had gone back to you for more discussion and then we're going to go back to her for rebuttal and then public comment. So, do you have anything further you would like to add?
Like I said, prior, I have all the photographs that Code Compliance took on the January 24th site inspection, if the planning commissioner wants to see them.
Okay, are you going to put them up on the screen for us?
I'll put them up on the screen, yes.
That would be great because then they can see it and we can see it together. Thank you.
And Miguel, these are, as far as you know, these are all photographs for this particular parcel?
As far as I know, for this particular parcel, yes.
Where did these photos come from?
Code Compliance.
Code Compliance photos.
So perhaps Code Compliance can clarify if some of these are from some other parcel.
So if you want to come up and speak to any of the photos as he presents them, if you have any opinion, then we can take it all at once.
Miguel, on that aerial that you had up before, could you maybe just sort of point out where, which parcel we're looking at and where the cultivation site is?
So we're looking at the southern parcel, the cultivation site is right here, up here, I believe, and on this area as well, perhaps over here?
Yeah, that kind of, I guess, north-south running area at the bottom.
This area and then this area as well.
Thank you. I'll just skip ahead and you can tell me to stop whenever you need me to stop.
Okay, was the trailer a permitted trailer?
I don't have a record of a trailer permit, but I didn't seem to include it in the correction notice.
Can you go back to the correction notice? I'll try to focus.
So the only violation on there is?
Grading.
Grading.
Oh, no, that would have been right, the start of the inspection.
I have the completed one if you guys want to look at it. Is it in their package?
I don't believe it is.
And what's the date on this one?
January 24th.
That's the 24th, so that's the same date you had all the other violations?
Yeah, there was only one inspection.
Is there a second page to it or?
No, this is just at the start, just so when I'm going back through the photos later, I know that all the photos following this go back to this site.
It's a long address. Address 5180 Harvard. That's our home.
Is the APN correct? 1624.
That says 6411, doesn't it?
Says 162412.
Oh, you're looking at APN?
Yes.
But the address, but the address is 6411 Harvard.
Yeah, that's.
So that's the right house, right property? Thank you.
All right, so skipping ahead.
Okay, so, there's no fencing here, doesn't need to be, because this is just the entrance of the road and the driveway?
Yeah, it's just a general photo of the property.
Okay, okay, we've seen this one.
So this is some grading here, but obviously there's no plants or cultivation there.
And those are the containers that needed to be permitted?
Yeah, they should be now, but at the time, we weren't doing shipping container permits.
Could you speak a little more distinctly, please?
Yeah, as of now, they do need permits, however, at the time of the inspection, we weren't issuing permits for shipping containers.
Okay, so, okay. Aren't shipping containers port, well, as long as they're not using them for living space, aren't they portable and not considered a permitted item?
This is not the same.
The policy has changed, but at the time of the inspection, we weren't issuing permits for just a plain shipping container.
Okay, but I've seen that in the notes, in the staffing report about shipping containers.
I think that's probably this one here, which does need a permit because it's been modified.
Okay, all right. Okay, sorry. And then that would be the small hoop house that you referenced baby plants in?
Yeah, so that's the only part that had plants at the time of the inspection.
And the size of that would require a permit? It looks to be small.
It is small, yeah. I think it had electrical in though, so.
There you go, okay.
Is the posting within 10 feet of?
No electrical?
The ingress?
Okay.
No, from memory, there isn't a posting at that little area there.
I'm still having a hard time if we could be more distinct.
There wasn't a permit posting at that little section.
Now, was this the area that was fenced?
This area is fenced, yeah. I would say this is more secondary to the main cultivation area, it's just a small nursery for the seedlings.
So, just, I'm curious, because I know we're declaring this a hoop house, but am I seeing cyclone fencing underneath that hoop house? So that is a gated area, fenced area, did it have a lock on the door?
I think so, yeah.
So it didn't need to have outside perimeter fencing, because that is fencing and it's locked, correct?
Yeah, it is fenced and locked.
Okay. And you think there's electrical in there?
There was, yeah, there were lights in there.
Do you have electrical in there?
Yeah.
On an extension cord?
Yes.
Qualified.
Because there's no power there, we have generators.
Right.
This structure was built to hold up the solar system, but I didn't.
Okay, okay. And what's the point of those photos?
We generally take a lot of photos so that we can just review them later when we get back to the office.
Got it, okay.
In case of something we missed.
And so, all of that stuff there, the electrical and everything and the generators, that's all unpermitted area because the building wasn't permitted at the time, is that a correct statement?
Yes.
Got it, okay. So, you went back three photos? Is that solar up there?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so this is part of the main cultivation area that doesn't have a fence surrounding it. Those rows further back do have a fence. And you can see that a bit more clearly in one of the other photos.
Did this have cannabis plants in it?
No, appears to be just empty pots.
Am I in your way?
So here, you can't see it very well, but there's fencing further back there, but no fencing around this hoop house in the foreground.
So you're saying there's fencing at the mountainside going across?
Yes, where the plants were growing, it's fenced.
Okay.
It didn't have a fence yet.
Is there any active plant in there?
No.
Okay.
So this is the permit posting, and as I said, there's no gate there, so I said, once the gate is finished, then you need to move the permit to within 10 feet of the entrance, wherever that entrance ends up being.
So I had a question about this last time that I never got out. We've seen this situation before, where people will have fenced their yard, and they have a rollback gate, where they roll the fencing back.
Right.
And, I'm trying to remember how we ruled on that, because it wasn't secured enough to be considered a locking situation, I think. Would you have considered if that was pulled close, let's just example, it's opened up for you to show up today and do your inspection.
Right.
And if you had showed up and that was closed and locked, would you have considered that secure and a gate?
Well, this here is a different situation, because the fence, in this location here, the fence doesn't continue around, there's no, the fencing doesn't roll back like it does on the other area.
Oh, so what does the fence do?
It's just a line of fencing with nothing around the other side.
So this is the end, we're seeing the end of the fence.
The end of the fencing, yeah. It doesn't continue off to the left, and it doesn't continue around the other side of the hoop house there.
So it's just straight to nowhere? What would you put up a fence for that didn't go anywhere?
It continues off to the right, out of view of this picture, and then there is some fencing further down to the right. But those hoop houses, you can see behind the permit posting there, there's no fence surrounding those.
Okay, okay. And so, when you cited the sign there, was there another opening that you considered to be the gate area where that signage should have been posted, or would this have been an acceptable area?
If that's where the entrance ends up being, once the fence is completed, then, yeah, that permit is okay.
Okay.
But if, once they complete the fence and the entrance ends up being, you know, 20, 20 yards further down, then they would need to move the permit.
Got it, okay. And this area would be unfenced?
Yeah, these are some pots down the backside of the hill, but.
Okay. So these weren't active pots that you were using, these were pre-Butte fire?
Right.
Okay. And what is this? Oh, this is inside that green, okay. And there's your electrical. Okay. Is that the end?
That's, that's them.
Sorry?
Yes, that's them.
Thank you. Okay, did that help with some clarity?
Did you ever get photographic proof that the fencing was installed completely?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
And going back to the correction notice briefly, I checked during the break, and the correction notice was sent to both Bobby and John Giotto.
Okay, and what address did you use for Bobby?
It's a Gmail address. There should be a copy coming around.
And Mr. Johnston earlier acknowledged that he was present during the inspection and that he had received the correction notice.
That's true, okay. So, there were three people that actually received your emails, 42nd Calaveras, C. Brant, and then the BD.
Just two, I think, just Bobby and John.
I'm looking at from Watts, too, and there's three different people listed on the email with photos, attachments. I am looking at B, exhibit B.
Oh, is it in the fact?
It's January 25th, and that one's February, this one's after the fact on February 15th. Okay. You like one? Okay, anything further that you would want to add for us?
No, I think that's it, and I see you've got any further questions.
I think we're good at the moment, and we will see if Miguel had anything further he wants to add before we go to the appellate.
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. The hearing this morning was pretty cluttered with a lot of extraneous facts, it seemed to me, regarding the alter ego problems and the corporate issues, and in reviewing the file during lunch break, it's even worse than that. But the, there was a, it was, they called it a de facto corporation called Johnston and Chen, or de facto partnership, excuse me, and then at some point, a letter was submitted, actually on September 6th, to the planning department stating that the de facto partnership was being reorganized into 42nd LLC, 42nd Calaveras LLC, and then, of course, later we heard about the partner removing himself. But I figure we can just leave that all aside for the, for this hearing, and really just focus on the facts that Tom identified items that needed to be corrected, and that those items were not corrected. The, there's evidently a factual dispute, the appellant's contend that he was mistaken about the, the permit, and that he was mistaken about the fence, and I'm sure they'll weigh in on that, he just showed photos and testified that the fence was incomplete, and that the permit was at the end of the fence, and he had instructed them to put it wherever the gate ended up being. And the permits that were required for the structure and the grading were not acquired or even began to be acquired within the 10-day period. And then finally, the, there's the water board permit, which was terminated. They received a notice of termination, or actually, 42nd LLC received a notice of termination in July of, on July, first, on October 27th, 2016, and then again, then the second notice of termination was on July 11th of 2017, and so there's currently no complete, and there never has been, a complete application to the water board, and it was denied for failure to submit sufficient funds, they didn't pay the full fee, and, and because there was no site plan. Oh, yeah, no cultural resources, inventory. So I just was hoping that we could narrow this hearing down to the issues that are actually the basis of denial, and hopefully proceed without getting back into the, all the extraneous facts that have come into play and personal disputes that may have occurred between the appellate and their former partners, and that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? If not, I would like to go to the appellate, we haven't done public comment yet, which there's not really anybody in the room to public comment, but I'm going to let go to them, and then we'll at least make that request for public comment, and there won't be any reason to rebuttal. Come on up. So.
And when he said that the cultural?
Resources?
Yeah, was not, there, it's, the water board does state that it was received, it's in the paperwork. It's in one of the paragraphs in there, that it was received.
Was there any disputing that you had on the pictures that we just looked at regarding code compliance issues?
The fence, the posting is right next to the gate, which is open. The fence was completed on both of those projects. We didn't have the front one fenced yet, but we did eventually fence it, too.
When you say front one, are you talking about a completely different grow?
No, we're talking about the first, the first greenhouse PVC hoop, that you showed it wasn't fenced, it had no pots plants in it. The back one was fenced, completely.
Okay.
And he didn't show a picture of?
If he was to zoom in, you could see the.
Okay, so he wouldn't have showed a picture if it was, if it was not out of compliance, so obviously he didn't need to, okay, so that would have been okay, otherwise he would have shown a.
Right, but he's saying that one was without, being within code compliance, but there was no, there was nothing in there, it was empty, there was no active grow in there.
But you did grow the year before, correct?
Not there.
Not there? Okay.
Because all those plants that you see in the nursery, those eventually went in there.
Okay, so, I'm going to, just, if you guys don't mind, I have a couple of things I want to run down here. Mr. Johnston, you were present for code inspection, you received a copy of the code inspection correction list, you stated earlier that the fencing was good, and you put a new lock on to comply, or you knew that that process was completed.
Correct.
The other items that are on the list about completing the fencing, and you just stated that two areas of the fencing were completed, a third area was not, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Did you, during that 10-day period, or anybody for the LLCs, do any of that fencing work, was it completed, and did any pictures within the 10-day period get submitted back to code compliance?
I don't believe anything submitted back to the code compliance.
Okay.
I was working with Thomas on my own project, which is our house.
Okay.
So I, we addressed that, and we took care of that. LLC was John's, was supposed to take care of everything, because I'm busy, you know, I'm working.
Okay, I'm looking at the hoop houses that have pots in them, but no plants.
Correct.
Why would there be pots in there if you never grew in them? They look like they were once upon a time grown in.
Those were just all being prepared to plant.
And not only that, but they were recycled pots, we got them from somebody else.
Okay, okay. And you were receiving, as in Mr. Johnston, personally, you were receiving those emails on the code correction notices?
Yes, I received two emails from Thomas.
Okay. In your mind, you were thinking that 42nd was taking care of all of those issues?
Of course.
So you didn't think you needed to get involved?
Correct.
Okay.
Because like you said, we run our own business, we run a construction company.
Okay. As the owner of the property, you realize that you're responsible for a lot of, everything.
I do, yes.
So, no matter who the registrant is, it always is going to fall back on you personally, okay. All right, I think I am done with my questions.
Just a clarification, and I apologize if we've already covered this, and it's just not sinking in. Did you ever get the shipping container structure permit?
We have the shipping, we have the drawings, crew up, so we can submit them now.
So you haven't actually got a permit, though?
Not yet.
Those are the same, that's from the same date, right, that we got, which was?
Grading?
No.
So that was the September, oh no, it was August 10th?
August 10th, yes.
Yeah, okay, they applied for it in August.
We just received the drawings back from the engineer.
Same answer as to hoop houses?
Hoop houses, yeah, the hoop houses are gone.
Oh, they're gone?
Yes.
Okay. Did you do a grow in 2017?
2017?
Last year.
Yes.
Yes.
Did you have the fence around it the whole time?
Yes.
Yes.
But, but no photographs proving it?
No.
That's all I have.
I thought I understood, but I might have not gotten it right. But at the time of the inspection on January 24th, 2017, all of your cannabis plants were inside a fence, correct?
Correct.
And there never was a time after that when you had plants on that property that weren't inside a fence, correct?
Correct.
Was there a time that weren't, there was a fence there, but it was incomplete, but it didn't matter because there was no plants in?
There was no plants.
And the access to the area where the plants were was basically a rollback of the fence at one corner, right?
The same fence, yes, correct.
Did you have like a steel post there?
Yes.
That you could put a chain and lock around?
Mm-hmm.
And that was there at the time of the inspection?
They were open, but yes.
They were rolled back, but you could just close them and lock them?
Yes, you see the one permit where it said it was the end of the fence, it's actually the gate was open, that's why it was the end of the fence.
Well, there's no actual requirement for a gate, you just have to have an access, and if you have an access, it's got to be lockable.
Correct, and it was.
And what was it that you obtained on the 5th of this month, permit wise? I have it written down that you got some permits on the 5th of March.
That was the, what?
It was the hoop house, is what I wrote down.
And the temporary, yeah, the temporary structure, and what was the other one? Yeah, the permit for the container.
Got it.
Okay, that's all we have.
I thought you said you haven't gotten the permit, you just have finished.
We just received the drawings back.
Right, so you still don't have a permit as such?
We'll have a permit as soon as we're done here.
Okay. I don't have any questions. How about you?
I'm good for right now.
Okay.
I'm good for, I'm done with questions.
Do you have anything further you want to add?
All I want to add is, all we want to do is fix this. I understand where you guys are coming from, and it is my fault, but we're trying to proceed and do everything correct now.
Thank you. The Water Resource Board, where are you at with that?
We've spoken to them, they said they will accept anything as long as we get it through you guys. I mean, we're not going to proceed until we.
We've started to apply for the, our NOI, I just got the computer days, day before yesterday, and so we, I've started it, I've, I got up to the map part, and then it froze.
Okay, so are you, when you say you're applying for it, are you doing that through the state process or the old process?
The old process.
No, it's through the state.
It's the state process, okay.
Yes.
All right.
Which doesn't, on, I was going to say, on the new form that you fill out for an NOI, there is no tier three. It goes tier one, tier three, and then there's tier two, and there's three, one's high risk, low risk, and moderate risk. There is no tier three.
Okay. All right, then I'm going to ask for public comment, if anybody on this appeal.
Don't say a word.
You get five.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Arthur Robinson.
Can you do me a huge favor? You do not have to, it's not mandatory, but Annette really likes it when people sign in under public comment, you can just write your name is all we ask.
Where at?
Someone took it.
No paper.
I think she can spell Arthur Roberts, we're good.
Robinson.
Robinson, see, can't get it right.
Common spelling.
Thank you.
I've known Bob and Chris for the last couple of years, and, you know, they were in a pretty bad situation with these partners that came in, you know, they made them a lot of promises, ended up taking off with everything the year before last. You know, Bob's fifth generation, I'm sure a lot of you may, may know him or his family, they're just trying to do the right thing and get this, get this going. They've been taking care of that Harvard Road back there, and if any of you have driven down that road, they know it's a pretty rough road. We're all Butte Fire victims, and it seems like a lot of people came into this county over the last couple of years, just taking advantage of people that are, you know, kind of in a hard spot, and that's kind of what happened with them. And everything that you guys asked from them, we have done, other than that NOI, which I actually spoke with Mr. Parker today, it was funny because this morning, it seems like, no, we can get him on the phone, I got him on the phone at the first call. He says as long as it's up to the county, whether they'll let us proceed or not, they'll let us file for that NOI today. So, I'm, I'm not here asking that, you know, we be the exception, but there are a lot of other people in this county that have had things overturned, that aren't in bad shape as they are. I just really hope that everybody can consider the circumstances, and kind of just understand where they're at right now, because they, Bob's been out here working for years, working on equipment, and it's, you know, it's a lot. So, I appreciate all of you taking the time and, and hearing us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no further public comment, we will close. Public comment, do you have anything you want to debate on what he said? How about you?
Nope.
And it's not a debate, it's a rebuttal.
A rebuttal.
Okay, so, and that's a private joke, because I get my words wrong and I have to be corrected, so it wasn't against you, it's against me.
I do it all the time, to everybody.
Okay, on that note, we're going to close the hearing, and we're going to bring it back to the commissioners for discussion.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'd like to start, and I think, I think the Water Quality Control Board ground is sound and solid, that Mr. Johnston signed the application, even if it had the wrong addresses on it, et cetera. They're responsible for complying with the Water Quality Control Board requirements, even if they can disavow that application, then they have filed no application. And the Water Quality Control Board has, has issued its notice of termination. I think on other issues, while they're a lot closer, and the facts are muddier, about fencing and permits and et cetera, but I think the Water Quality Control Board issue is very clear. I'm, I feel sorry, very sorry, that Johnston's been taken advantage of by other people, but it's their responsibility under the ordinance to make sure the Water Quality Control Board application was made in a timely fashion, and was followed up appropriately, and was filed with the proper addresses and such on it, and so I suggest that we, we deny the appeal solely on that ground, without making a determination as to the other grounds.
I would agree to a certain extent that a couple of the items are, I suppose ambiguous might be the answer. The fencing, I can't quite get my hand around that one. It just, I can't tell you whether I think or don't think they had the fencing in it, it's, I suspect they did. I suspect they did eventually, at least in time for the grow. The locks, I think they fixed it right away. The posting, I suspect it was okay, depending on how, where they put the gate and all that sort of stuff. But the last three items, the structure, the permits, the structure permit, the grading permit, and the hoop house permit, just didn't do it. And even, to a certain extent, haven't done it yet. They certainly weren't done on time. But even if you get past the 10 days, months and months and months went back, went by, and you just didn't do it. Now, I'm totally sympathetic with you, I hear your case, but the bad guy isn't in the room. I wish he were, I wish we could do something about it, but we can't. I'm going to have to go with the denial on the water board issue, and then on, at least on the other, the last three of them.
I think we should go with all of it, because the fence, the locks, and the permit were easy. Alls it took was a photo sent in, and nobody even took a photo and sent it in. And you were there, you said that you knew about it, you obviously fixed it, but within the 10 days, no one even sent in a photo. That's an easy fix, in my mind. The other ones were harder, and it would have been, I believe, probably a little bit more time, but nobody did anything within the 10 days. And then the water board, I have an issue with that, and my biggest issue with that is, you signed it. You're saying that it wasn't in your name, and I get that, that somebody else did it, and I get that. You said the APN number is wrong, and I get that, except for you signed it. So that tells me that you looked at it and still submitted incorrect paperwork.
Okay, on the, on the posting citation, I think it's, I come out believing that it was posted within 10 feet of the access. There was not a gate needed. You just have to post within 10 feet of the access, and the access was to roll away the fence. And I think on the fencing, I'm satisfied the fencing was complete. Wherever there were live medical cannabis plants, which is what's required. I think there may have been some confusion, thinking that the rollback gate was actually an unfinished part of the fence. But it wasn't, it was a gate, and of course, it was open when you're going through it. Then I think it gets a little tougher, I think that there's a long delay between the citation and the applications for the permits for the container and the hoop houses. And a long delay for getting, getting the grading drawings. Too long, I think, and this is probably a function of leaving the paperwork up to somebody that didn't do what they were supposed to do. But, I mean, sometimes you just make bad choices when you go into business with somebody that you shouldn't have. There's not a lot this commission, I think, can do about that. On the water board situation, I think the same thing applies. Even if you assume that the application was for, or for the benefit of the applicant here, it was still determined to be established or expanded after the 2nd of October of 2015. It was missing the site management plan and the cultural resources inventory, although the latter one did get sent in, and insufficient funds. And so it was never a complete application for the water board's purposes, which is what the urgency ordinance requires us to find existed. And it didn't happen, it didn't exist, and I don't see how we can get around that. So, I think I'm prepared to deny the appeal on the permits, for the grading and the structures, and on the water board. Failure to get that done.
Okay. So, I've got two that agree with each other. And I'm pretty much in line with those two. So, as I'm looking through the resolution, it appears that we would be striking the in-ten number one states, because that is the fenced and locked area, you would strike item number one, is it?
Yes.
And then item number two, current registration document issued. Weatherproof, and then we all believe that that was done, it shall be posted six to four feet. We believe it was fixed during the 10 days. So, we would be basically ruling on three, four, and five, striking one and two, Peter. Okay. So, based on that, is there any other changes that anybody, you want to make more changes? Okay, let's hear it.
Okay, on the first whereas clause, it refers to commercial cannabis registration 2016-695. Should be 965. On the last whereas clause, it refers to the public hearing on February 22nd. Should be March 8th. And then, of more substance, on what was old paragraph four, which would now be paragraph two on the water board situation. The evidence, the first line says that the registrant received two notices of an incomplete NOI. That's not clear to me, that that happened.
I have suggested language, if I could try if you want.
Please.
I was going to suggest, under the evidence, strike the registrant received, and started off with two notices of an incomplete NOI were issued by the Water Quality Control Board, comma, and then back to the sentence, and on January 12th, 2018, the planning department received a notice of termination, a notice of intent of registrant's NOI. Then add this sentence, while those notices apparently were not immediately and personally received by named registrant representative Bobby Johnston, or Landover owner Chris Johnston, those persons were responsible for proper notification to the Water Quality Control Board of their proper addresses. I could go slow, more slowly.
I think everybody understood that pretty clearly.
I mean, I don't know, because on the original NOI that was submitted, actually the only NOI that was submitted, the landowner information has the correct post office box number 193. And what is not clear, and probably nobody here has an answer to it, is why the water board sent its notices to the PO box 195 of McCallum Hill. Something happened there, it's not in the record.
I'm subject to suggestion.
Well, I think you're correct, that we can say that the two notices of an incomplete NOI were issued by the water board.
Right.
And on January 12th, the planning department received a notice of termination. And just leave it at that, because it's too confusing about where these notices went and why they went there.
Okay.
And, you know, really, I think this evidence should also reflect that the NOI that was submitted was, was not complete, for the reasons stated. In other words, it didn't have the cultural resources inventory.
It does say incomplete NOI on here.
But that's referring to the notices from the water board.
Right.
What I'm referring to is the NOI that was submitted was incomplete.
Okay. Is everybody good with those language changes?
So the actual language change there would be?
Would be that the...
There was no complete NOI submitted, and then start the paragraph, continue the paragraph with two notices of an incomplete.
Please.
Do you not want to take his, beginning of his paragraph noting that Bobby Johnston was on that notification of the NOI? Or you want to leave it off?
I can leave it off, I just thought it might be, again, to clarify. I think Commissioner Booster is correct, that the way I drafted it could muddy the waters rather than clarify.
Okay. So, for clarity purposes, can you read exactly how you want this to state for the county department?
Well, I would have the first sentence go something like this. That the NOI that was submitted, actually two things, was submitted in the name of Forty Second Calaveras LLC, not the registrant. And was deemed incomplete because the site was determined to have been established or expanded after 2 October 2015, comma. The site management plan was missing. And insufficient funds were submitted for the tier three NOI. And then just continue with Mr. Lattish's changes to what is, was the first sentence.
How about when was submitted, you said in the name of such and such, but signed by applicant representative Bobby Johnston?
That's fine.
I just feel like I missed something. Were there insufficient funds, or just not a much, not enough money submitted? Because insufficient funds is an indication of a return check to me. So, they were short paying their fees.
The notice says insufficient, other insufficient, says insufficient funds submitted for the tier three NOI.
Okay, that'll work, the way that it reads.
And if I understand correctly, you're striking everything from the water board indicated?
No, no, no. All that stays in.
All that stays in, okay.
We're just adding.
But thanks for asking.
Yes, thanks for participating.
My pleasure.
Okay, so, we've got that straight. Can I get you to read a recommendation for us, please?
Staffer demands that the planning commission adopt resolution 2018-020, denying appeal 2016-965, opposing the planning director's denial of this application.
Thank you.
As amended.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. Peter?
So this decision is final unless appealed to the board of supervisors within 15 calendar days.
Okay, so you have one more hearing, right?
We didn't, that's what we didn't even hear on that.
Yeah, we didn't.
We still have to have a hearing, correct?
Somebody appealed.
Well, I feel, I feel totally because it was, we, when we applied, because both parcels are the original application.
Okay, I want to, I want to, for the sake of just making sure that I have covered all of our bases, I have to open this hearing and address the appeal fee that was paid, filed, and it's here before us. So I do, I mean, so, we are moving on to item number five, 2016-976, appeal by Chris Johnston. And... Do you want to withdraw the appeal? Can she do that here on site? Okay, can you come up and, to the mic and do that, please?
I appeal the, I don't know what parcel number it was.
Parcel number 016021028.
I appeal, I mean, I...
You withdraw your appeal.
My appeal, yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any objections to that?
No.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, we will accept your appeal, and we'll take a vote, and may she make a motion to...
By her action of withdrawing, she has a right to do so, and that's it.
We're done?
Okay, thank you.
Now, wait, one second.
Yes.
Does she get her feedback for withdrawing, or the paperwork and staff time was used and no?
We've used that.
That's what I was asking, okay, perfect, thank you. Okay. Informational items, there are none. Study session, there are none. Commissioner reports?
Oh, yeah.
You have to be quick, because I promised somebody...
Here's a quick, I'm having, oh yeah.
Take your time, I'm kidding.
Catherine Lamb is retiring as the executive director of the Blue Mountain Youth and Family Center in West Point. And I think some recognition should be given that she is, has been a key member of the District Two community, as well as the West Point community, and of the county as a whole. Has provided tremendous support to youth and families in the West Point area. And I just would like to commend her, and if it's appropriate, have the planning commission commend her.
I commend her, and we love community people. You might make a recommendation to your supervisor to have a resolution. Okay, perfect.
We didn't agendaize a proclamation, but I think we can let this one go.
We're just commending her and saying we're proud of community work.
Okay, I don't have a whole lot to report. Mr. Bocelli?
Well, I just wanted to report that I have completed my training as mandated by county council.
And assaulted me by throwing it to me in the form of a paper airplane, just to put it on the record.
Ooh, Commissioner Bocelli.
Divisive.
Wow, okay, and Commissioner Sisk, have you completed yours?
My way? Human Resources just provided me a list of commissioners that still had to do it. A lot of it was waiting for people to get online with the new email system. I understand, I've communicated with all of the commissioners who have not completed it, and it will be done before HR's deadline, is what I'm hearing. So I don't think we'll have an issue of HR needing to come in here and chastise anybody, which is what they threatened to do.
Oh, that would have been fun, because we're pretty feisty, bring it on.
I don't know if I did that training or not, so...
It's March 20th, or 26th or something was the deadline.
And then, it was the 23rd.
23rd?
Yeah. And I'm getting chastised over my...
Can the record reflect I got at 100?
Yes, sir.
We don't want to...
That was that training we did a long time ago.
Yeah, we did it over a year ago, Karen, let's not talk about the delinquents. Okay. And you're just so quiet down there, so what's happening in your district?
I need to do my training.
Do you need help with that? Because we can get HR in here for you.
We're, we're good.
Okay, I think we're all good now. Karen, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No. I'll step to Tapping, Tapping.
You what?
I'll step to Tapping, Tapping District one, so... I just started surveying.
I'm going to move on now. Mr. Director, do you have anything?
Just briefly, you know, it was some time ago now, we went through an exercise of looking at priorities for the department. Unfortunately, I have not been able to get that scheduled with the board. I think we've had a lot of other issues that just haven't really been able to get this to raise to the top level of importance with the CAO and others. So, but with the adoption of the ban, and even though there's a whole lot of work for us in the future, defending the lawsuits that we've received against it. In planning, we get to sort of move back towards actual planning stuff. I did have a conversation the other day with our consultants on the EIR. I am hoping to get a screen check within the next week or two, they said. Interesting, I was gone last meeting, because I was at the annual California County Planning Directors Association Annual Conference. Learned some, learned a lot, some that was very, you know, good things to learn about, and some like, oh my God, we'll never get the general plan done. There are now new requirements, both in SEQA as well as general plan law, that add new issues to general plan that went into effect this year. issues to general plan that went into effect this year. I had hoped a year ago that we might be able to get the general plan adopted, we didn't have to address those new things until the next update. But instead, we will have to add policies relating to...
I don't know what's going on, we're getting all kinds of beeping, and I, obviously, it's getting her, too.
Environmental justice is a new element that's required. I was on the phone with one from Officer Planning and Research yesterday to try to understand a little bit more how that applies to us, and we'll be working on that over the next few months, and be bringing back some additional policy language that we'll be adding to the general plan. I am hopeful that we've addressed most of the issues already in a lot of policies. I think the one concern that we have for the most part is access to health care in parts of the community. So that's something I'll be working with Miguel and the Public Health Department on, and bringing something back to you, and trying to figure out a way to meld that into the existing general plan without, you know, creating problems with the EIR and recirculation of the EIR. So we'll be looking very closely at how we can do that, and working with council on that. And then there are new requirements in SEQA that haven't actually gone into effect yet, but are likely to be adopted later this year and will become effective 60 days after adoption, which is likely, likely to be before we certify the EIR. And the information I received was, it really doesn't matter when you started the EIR, it's when you certify the EIR that it's consistent. So I'm working with the consultants to address those new requirements, and they are energy and wildfire. So those are new requirements that will be part of the SEQA analysis in the future, probably, you know, summer to fall, when they'll become effective. So...
When do you think the commission itself will be first presented with the general plan issue?
Once we get a new commission.
My optimistic timeframe is that in September, we can begin hearings, final adoption hearings, and review the EIR and certification. I say it's optimistic because looking at the minimum timeframes that we would have for circulation of the EIR, comment period, response to comments, preparation of the final, that would be the shortest timeframe. If there are a lot of comments, that will take longer to analyze, and so that could push that date out. I am hopeful that we can adopt a general plan by the end of this calendar year. I'm not going to place any bets on it.
And I'm not sure what role we could play in this, but if it's possible for the Planning Commission or Planning Commissioners to support the need for the planning department to be funded in order to do its job, I'd sure like to take part in that.
Well, budget hearings are in June.
All right, yeah, if it's just a matter of being a commission member as a member of the public, got me in.
Okay, well, we'll see what happens. I just received the budget instructions this, this morning, haven't had a chance to go through them, and we'll be looking at how do we meet all of our obligations within the budget constraints that we have. That's all I have to report.
Well, I'll tell you this, somebody better get busy doing something, because we have no industry in this county, we can't bring industry into this county, we don't have a valid general plan, and we need to get something done. Even if we have to come here day after day after day after day, we need to get something done.
I would have to, yeah, I, I understand, but the one, the one thing I do want to, we have a valid general plan. It, you know, we're working on an update, and we, we realize that we want to make changes to it.
We have a 20-year-old general plan that doesn't allow for industry to come into this county. We need to get something done.
I think there is no, no disagreement that we want to update the general plan.
I agree, and I know you want to. I know everybody does.
But I, I just caution you to make, about making statements about it's invalid.
Bad choice of words, it's like rebuttal in a butt. But it's, I mean, and we sat here for a year and worked on it, and here we are, going on three years later, in the same spot we were three years ago. It was, it's in draft form, and after three years of playing around with other things, we still have nothing to present and get our county moving in a positive direction, and we need to do something to make that happen. So we need to have some supervisors give us some positive energy and positive direction in moving this county forward and stop being in a stalemate. That's my personal opinion.
What is the story of the cannabis applications with the appeals? Why is it processing, are you still processing?
We, we are still processing. I think we have about 120 or 30 that are left to go.
People not withdrawing them?
Some have, we have had quite a few withdrawals, but there were just a number that we weren't able to process. And I think a couple of us had a conversation during one of the breaks about, you know, why are these still, you know, and how come they're, they're so complex? Well, the easy ones were, were looked at earlier, and, you know, so we're still working our way through them. Because they have the right to continue to cultivate for 90 days from tomorrow, which is the effective date of the ordinance, the ban ordinance.
And this is report out, so we really can't agendaize a discussion on all the whys right now.
That, that, we, we feel that we need to continue to process those applications that were filed during the timeframe, filed in a timely manner, and they have a right to complete the process. It's also fairness to everyone else that's been involved in the process, that, you know, those who were approved or were denied, that everyone else is treated, have been treated equally, so...
Can somebody who's submitted an application, but it hasn't been acted on by the planning department, can they simply withdraw it?
Yes, they can a number of, number half.
And if, if they have an application that the planning department has denied, the letter's gone out, can they withdraw it in such a way to get rid of that denial?
No.
And so if they want to have a clean record going forward, for whatever reason, then they would have to appeal to the commission.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm being told that we have to agendaize these items to be having discussions, so we have to be careful.
Make another paper.
Do you want, no, don't make any more paper airplanes, and I'll behave myself, too. Do, I mean, I, obviously, there's a lot of questions here and a lot of discussions. Do you want to just keep moving in a forward path, or do you want me to request? And you all request, Peter, agendaize an item for discussion only.
I don't think I need any more now.
You don't think you need any more?
No.
Okay, so there you go.
Okay.
Okay. Are we done?
I'm done.
We're done.
We're going to adjourn, and...
Bingo. Get some lunch.
The court's office will cooperate, isn't it?
It will cooperate.
Yeah.